This is the regular meeting of Livingston's planning board and notice of this meeting has been distributed in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I know for the record, eat short, Ms. Begoli and Mrs. Santola are not present this evening. Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein?
He's present.
Mr. Klein is here.
Mr. Ratner? Mr. Reber? Mr. Diner? Mr. Lewis? Ms. Gucci? Ms. Vishnu? Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
We have our corm, we have our board attorney, assistant township engineer, our planner, and our traffic consultant.
Thank you, and if you can please call the matter that's on the agenda for this evening?
That matter that's scheduled for this evening is a continued hearing for preliminary and final site plan variances for 39 West Northfield Road, Block 4801, Lot 9, application number 2023-20-PFSBV 39 West Northfield Associates LLC.
Thank you very much, Jackie. So we're here.
On the record, while I was not here for the October 17th meeting, I've read the transcript.
Thank you very much, Barry.
I would also make the same comment that I very enjoyably read the transcript. Thank you all very much for a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Richard. So just quick background, we were here on the 5th, we were here again on the 17th, we're here tonight for the third evening. So far, we've had testifying Brian Natali, Michael Lonza Fama, the applicant's professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, Ryan Conway, the landscape architect, Harold Maltz, the applicant's traffic engineer, Lance Blake, I believe began testimony as well, the professional architect, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we're getting to him this evening, correct?
Okay, that's what I thought. So we're here, and how many witnesses do you have left?
Two witnesses this evening, Chairman, and just for the record, John Wichescola on behalf of 39 West Northfield Associates LLC. Chairman, you basically summarized what was going to be my summary, but I'll get to it in a moment, it's fine. So actually, maybe if I may, and as indicated, this is the third public hearing with respect to this application. We're seeking site plan approval for the development of an approximately 55,200 square-foot medical office building that's going to be occupied by Summit Health. Back in September, you heard the testimony of Brian Natal, Senior VP of Facilities for Summit Health. He provided detailed testimony regarding the need for this medical health facility, the healthcare benefits that it's going to provide to the community, and the reasons why Summit chose this particular location. He did mention, and I just want to remind the board, unlike their location at 75 East Northfield, this building would not have an urgent care component to it, and it's really basically just a large doctor's office. Mike Lonza Fama, back in September, went through all aspects of the civil design of the project, stormwater management, we spent a fair amount of time on circulation, parking, et cetera. He really covered everything except for landscaping and lighting. Following the September meeting, and we heard considerable comments from the board, as well as the public, and concerns about landscaping and setbacks and the like, our professionals actually met with some of the neighbors back on September 30th, and before we came back to you in October, we had submitted a revised set of plans. That evening of October 17th, Brian Conway started off, and he went through the landscaping and lighting in detail, and particularly the modifications that were made. And just as a reminder, we enhanced the landscaping around the perimeter, we swapped landscaping to the other side of the fence in certain locations, really as a result of comments from some of the board members, we pulled parking back away from some of the residential homes as well, and we also relocated those EV chargers which were originally directly adjacent to one of our directly adjacent neighbors, and we put them into the parking lot because there was concern about fire hazards and safety and so on and so forth. We also relocated the refuse enclosure further away from the residential homes. So you also heard the testimony of our traffic engineer, Harold Maltz, at our last meeting. So our two witnesses and our final witnesses that will be presenting this evening are Lance Blake, our project architect, he's going to provide an overview of the proposed building, the building elevations, he's going to speak to the signage, you heard about the signage from Mike Lonza Fama, but we didn't have the elevations up, so you'll see what is proposed in that regard. And then our second witness will be recalling Mike Lonza Fama to come up in his capacity as a professional planner. So with that, I'd like to call Lance Blake.
Before you introduce Lance, I again apologize I wasn't here at the last meeting, but again, have read the transcript and had a couple of relatively simplistic questions pertaining to the witnesses from the last meeting that I would just like to ask if I could.
Sure. And I do have everyone here except for Mr. Maltz, but Brian is here, and I suspect some may be directed at him and possibly Mr. Lonza Fama.
Okay, so one pertains to lighting, the other one actually pertains to parking, and the parking was a thought, and even if Harold is not here, understanding that even if you finish all of the application tonight, there's still opportunity maybe to make some adjustments to the final plan. And I briefly discussed this with Lee Klein, the traffic engineer representing the board, and that is something that we've seen a lot of lately with regard to residential uses, and that is tandem parking. Obviously, for visitors, tandem parking is not going to be anything that you could use, but you have a number of employees that are going to be here all day, every day, good part of the day, every day during the operation of the property. And if there was an ability to perhaps set some of the parking up as tandem where employees could use those spaces that maybe, I don't believe you would end up reducing or gaining parking spaces by that, and I don't know that that's necessarily the issue, but perhaps we might be able to increase some of the buffer areas by doing that, perhaps leave some of the landscaped areas that are there, or treat areas that are there now by doing that. And I ask that perhaps either engineering-wise, it's probably more engineering than Harold, to look at the possibility of that and see if there's some benefit that can be gained that'll ease the size of the parking area and the location of that vis a vis to the neighbors. So that's that item. The other one pertains to the lighting, and very impressed with the lighting fixtures that you talked about, that you're using with the LEDs that are forward-facing, and all of that is terrific, and the fact that you'll, after business on any of the days, cut the usage down to 50%, which is also terrific. But one of the areas, and I'm not sure, and maybe I missed it, so I'll ask for clarification, is the spillage of light is one thing that becomes annoying to a neighbor, and that seems to be completely controlled by what you have right now. But seeing the source of the light is the other area that really wasn't talked about, and I don't know if these fixtures also will have house side shields pertaining to any of the poles that are around the neighbor's property, so that when they're looking at the site, the downlight is the downlight, but they're not looking up at the light bulb. Why we use recessed lighting as opposed to bulbs that are coming down, because it's much less impactful to do that. I don't know the answer, and I'm not necessarily asking for the answer, but that's something that I would like perhaps considered before the lighting is finalized on the plan, if there is way to protect from the neighbor's view the actual light source that's in those fixtures, especially the higher ones.
So, Mr. Diner, can I make this suggestion on that? Actually, on both items, because we'll certainly consider the tandems and the fixtures. Mike's going to be up as our planner next, although Brian testified on the lighting as well, so between the two of them, perhaps after our architect goes, we'll just circle back on that lighting issue and go back over it, just in terms of...
Fair enough, I don't want to beat it to death.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
It'll be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. All right, give us your full name for the record, please.
And Mr. Blake, can you please provide the board with a summary of your educational background and licenses that you hold?
I'm licensed professional, I hold a bachelor's, I'm the principal.
I'm the principal, here, I'll just sit down.
Sit down for this.
I'm the managing principal of Rotwan &amp; Blake, my firm, located in 16 Micro Lab Road in Livingston. I've testified before numerous boards throughout the state, including Livingston, I am a resident of Livingston, and I've been before this board, as well as the Board of Adjustments, many times.
Mr. Blake, your office prepared the plans that are before the board this evening, architectural, and I would ask you to please provide the board with an overview.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay, great. Sure, so when we were first looking to develop this building on the site, you know, one of our charges was to build this new two-story building on the existing footprint, which was testified by Mr. Lonza Fama. So I'll take you really quickly through the floor plans, and then we'll talk about the building architecture. So what you're seeing are, what you're seeing on the screen are the submitted floor plans. This first plan is the basement plan. There is an existing basement within the building, and we're just utilizing that footprint, you know, for the basement space in which mechanicals will be provided within that area, as well as potentially some, you know, some staff functions for the use. The next plan basically is the first floor plan, showing the entrances and exits out of the building. To the left side is where our main entrance and lobby will occur. There'll be a through corridor that will take you to the Northfield side, in which there'll be an exit, and the building will basically be fit up with the proposed uses, you know, of the doctor's offices. Also, on the main entrance side, there'll be a covered canopy for patients to be able to be dropped off undercover. Next plan just shows the second floor plan, core elements, very simple. Now we are looking at the elevations, the elevations of the building. The building height will be 28 feet to the roof surface with a 2'6 parapet totaling 29 feet 7 inches. The building will also, as you can see with the colored elevations, on the right side, the building elevations will have a warm palette of earth tone materials, grayish, grayish brick with, that'll have basically, let me blow this up a little bit, that will have a speckled range to it, so it'll have a lot of, feel like it'll have a lot of texture. We're also utilizing engineered wood products that would be very, you know, warm in nature as well. There will also be some metal elements, metal, what I call bands or eyebrows that encapsulate some of the architectural elements of the wood and brick, and it creates a rhythm around the building, as well creating a lot of, I think, visual interest. So right now, we are looking at the elevation of the Northfield side, and I'll just go quickly through the signage, so you can see...
Before you leave, do we have that in evidence?
Sure. Trying to get it small enough to be able to see the... Okay. So the upper elevation is the south elevation, obviously, you can see by the neighboring elevation to the left, that's the Northfield side. The north elevation, I'm sorry, vice versa. The south elevation is the main entrance lobby side with the main drop-off canopy where the main lobby would occur. North elevation... Yeah, that's the rear, the top one is the rear elevation. North elevation faces Northfield, and then west elevation and east elevation are the, what we'll call the perspective views of the building. West elevation is Collins Terrace, the third one down. So that shows the corner, and then also the east elevation shows the corner of the parking lot and the building facing Collins Terrace as well.
Lance, could you start at the top again, because you still have me confused. It's a start at the top picture that we're looking at on the same plan as you. That's facing what?
All right, can you see the cursor? Okay.
I think the drawings we have are different than yours.
This one should be the same.
The very top one is labeled west.
Says west elevation.
These were resubmitted, we had changed these.
Yeah, I think they were resubmitted with the last submittal, so you might be looking at the initial submittal.
I think that's why you're confused. Yeah, we had resubmitted these.
I don't think we have them.
Yeah, we have the ones dated September 13th, 21.
Yeah, I don't know if I have that or not.
This revision is dated...
So that's south.
Yeah, it's in September, that's right.
So that's facing the parking lot.
South elevation faces parking lot.
There you go.
Okay. North elevation faces Northfield. West elevation faces Collins Terrace, and I think it's noted on the elevation. And east elevation faces, you know, looks towards...
Adjacent commercial property.
The neighboring property, yes, that's correct. So the snapshots, you know, show the colored elevations adjacent to these elevations, and basically, rather than looking at a black and white, two-dimensional elevation, it shows a little bit of perspective depth and materiality to the building. So as I was saying, the building is a composition of warm earth tone materials, brick, that's a light, we'll call it grayish color, with metal accents and engineered wood accent products, in general as a composition throughout, you know, all the facades of the building. So that's when I started to get into looking at the signage. Any questions on the architecture first? So I just blew up the elevation looking south, and this is the elevation showing the main entrance and canopy. The canopy cantilevers over a portion of the drive aisle. Right now, we're at the parking lot looking...
The backside of the building.
This is the back.
That's the south side.
That's the south face of the building, yes, correct. Yes. That's the main, yeah, I mean, that's the main patient entrance.
So we're in the parking lot looking at the south side of the building, looking north at the south side of the building.
That's correct, yeah. So you can see that the Summit Health sign and logo are mounted on the face of the canopy, on top, but out at the face of the canopy. And that sign panel is 3'3" by 17 feet, and it's internally illuminated. The next sign, there are two signs on the Northfield side, and again, we have the Summit Health and logo that's mounted on top of the canopy at the outer face. So it's not mounted on the facade of the building, it's actually proud of the facade. So it's like, you know, 5 feet off of the building. And that sign again is 3'3" by 22 feet.
Is there pedestrian-only access there, or can a vehicle pull up?
No vehicle can pull up, no, no, there's no curb cut or...
Pull up, there's nothing.
So it's, you know, it creates, you know, a nice front to the street as an entrance, it's an exit, or if somebody were coming in by bus, you know, any staff in the building, you know, they would be dropped off, I guess, on the corner or close to the building, and would be able to walk, you know, walk up to the, you know, the front of the building off of Northfield. We also have on the upper right-hand corner of the building, fascia, a building identification sign showing the address 39W. Although this one doesn't have dimensions, it is going to be 3 by 10. And again, it will be, these signs are either backlit or internally illuminated. The next facade, the west facade, and this faces...
Collins Terrace.
Collins Terrace, thank you. We have, as you're coming down Northfield, there's a sign at the corner, you know, at the middle and corner of the building, which again, Summit Health with the Summit logo, and that's 48 by 136. And there's nothing on the east side of the building.
Are you also proposing a monument sign?
Thank you, yes. You can see on the corner, there is a monument sign. What was the size of that? 2'9" by 6 for the record.
So you have, you're proposing a large address sign on top?
Correct.
Then you have another sign right on the corner?
Correct.
Then another sign on the entrance on the north side?
Yes.
Okay, what's then the purpose of now the monument sign?
Well, the monument sign, in fact, I have an exhibit that I could pull up, it's a rendering showing the corner, because as you're coming down Northfield...
Well, isn't the purpose of the sign to kind of identify where you are and that you've...
Yes.
Okay, but there already is large signage on the building doing that same thing?
Right, but the 39W may not be as visible coming down a portion of Northfield as the monument sign would reveal at the corner.
If the monument sign says Summit Health, and then that same sign facing the same direction says Summit Health.
Oh, that one, yeah, I thought you were talking about the 39W.
I'm talking about everything in general, and then the purpose of the monument sign with all the other signage that's there.
Right, right.
Well, going back to the monument sign, what's on it?
The monument sign would be Summit Health as well. Summit Health with the logo.
I believe there is an illustration that also showed the street number.
Yes, it does show 39 at the bottom corner.
All right, so if you have a monument sign, if you have a monument sign, which has the street number, why do you need the sign on the top of the building? In fact, if that sign says 39, 33, whatever it is, 39W?
39W, yeah.
My reaction was, where are X and Y? Because if you have a W on a building, it already indicates that it's part of a larger development, and you have Building A, Building C, and so on.
Well, W is west.
Yeah.
So? At my house, it doesn't say 22 West Something Street, it just says 22.
That's okay.
I'm puzzled as to why you need both a monument sign and an address sign on the front of the building, and if the sign on the monument is visible from two directions, more people will see that than the wall, and if the purpose of the wall sign is to meet the requirement of the fire department, police department identifying the address, you don't need that big sign, you need something down at the level, well, they'll be looking at house numbers or street numbers or building numbers as they go down the street. I also have another question, now that I have my voice back. Going to the rear of the building, are you able to tell us the distance from that sign to the residential property line?
The Summit Health sign?
Yes.
To the property line?
If not, we'll ask Mr. Lonza Fama the same question.
To Mr. Lonza Fama.
And the reason I ask the question, if it should be less than 100 feet, you cannot illuminate the sign the way it is illuminated?
If it's less than 100 feet.
That's right.
From the sign to the property line?
To the residential zone property line.
On the backside of the building, yeah. Yeah, I think it's well...
It probably is, but it should be up for record if it is. It probably is, but it should be up to record if it is.
How do I get to the other exhibit?
Well, let's let Mike, Mike's gonna answer that question. So I'm gonna report and I can have Mr. Lonzo Fama confirm when he gets up, but it's a hundred fifteen feet from that rear, the parking lot facing sign, south elevation to the closest residential zoned property line.
So right now, I'm showing an exhibit, I guess this should be marked.
Yeah.
It's a.
Mr. Valeria, I think we're up to exhibit A eight.
My records show A eight, I'll double check that.
My last one is A seven.
Yep. So this would be exhibit A eight.
So this is a rendering showing the corner of Northfield and, you know, the adjacent road. And the will be, you know, the will be trees and landscaping. And I don't have the exact position of these trees, this is just a rendered version. But, you know, as the trees mature, you know, that Summit Health sign might get, you know, somewhat obscured a little bit. But during the winter, certainly, it would be visible. But, you know, the monument sign, you know, will be in the clear as well as the thirty-nine W. But it's more for, it's more for visibility, you know, so that people don't really miss the, you know, the signage. But.
Mr. Klein, we hear your comments relative to the signage. We'll take it under advice and report back before this is over.
As long as we have an answer.
We'll have an answer.
While you're on the signage and lighting of the signage, the timing that the signage will go off that's facing any of the neighbors' properties.
Right.
Again, the benefit of any of the signage in the back.
Close the business.
Signs are off, okay.
So in this exhibit, you can see the corner, how the materials work together, landscaping, the adjacency to the other building. And I believe that it's going to be a very attractive building, in my professional opinion. So that concludes my testimony and if there are any questions?
Questions from the board?
Plan for the facility?
I'm not the architect for the interiors, so I don't know that answer.
You're not getting the interiors.
That would, I'd have to defer to the folks at Summit Medical.
Yep. Will do.
Are there other questions from the board? Thank you, are there any questions for the, from the, oh, sorry about you.
I'm slow.
That's okay.
I'm slow. Roof access, is there internal roof access for fire department to get up on the roof?
Well, there will be, yes.
Okay, Knox box?
Yes.
The HVAC units that are on the roof are all going to be shielded and non-visible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. There's not a sign to tell people where to go for the parking. Is there anything on the monument sign that could point people in that direction? Because I'm afraid that if they go continue on Northfield, that's an exit only now, that driveway. So if you're gonna use the monument sign, is it possible to use it maybe with an arrow, parking? Is that permitted?
I suppose.
If we have a monument sign, that makes good sense.
Well, the floor-to-floor heights, that's more of the question that should be, you know, asked. The floor-to-floor heights will be in the neighborhood of thirteen and a half feet. And that's to be able to get a nine-foot ceiling?
Yeah, it's a board planner for anyone, even though he's sitting in the audience, that's the board planner. Have a seat up here.
Not, I don't believe in MRI.
Any other questions? Questions from the public for this witness as to this witness's testimony? Come on up. And name for the record, please.
Melissa Cianci. Hi, I just have a couple of questions. What was the square footage of the basement space?
I believe the basement space was just over six thousand square feet and change.
And is that included in the?
Yes.
Footprint, okay. And then you mentioned that there's going to be two illuminated signs, is that correct?
Two?
Yes.
No, there'll be more.
Okay. The sign that is, the sign that's facing Collins Terrace, is that one of the illuminated ones?
Yes.
And how far from the residential property line on Collins Terrace is that illuminated property sign?
How far from the?
Residential property line.
I think you're asking a question which is generated by the one that I asked. However, I asked as to a distance requirement that is for illuminated signs in a rear parking lot that is adjacent to a residential zone. There is no ordinance that we have that applies any kind of limit for distance to other properties or any other signs.
Okay, so there, but there is. I guess from this rendering, I'm not really sure, is that sign that's alongside the building that says Summit Health, that's going to be facing Collins Terrace?
That's correct.
Where the residents are, and that sign will be illuminated?
Yes.
Okay.
And by the way, and if I may, and I don't want to interrupt your flow here, but I actually have been doing some consultation, Mr. Klein, since you raised the issue in the first instance. And your comments are well-taken regarding the signage. Monument sign is critical from our perspective relative to this location. And if there's a concern or just a general feeling relative to the sign that we're talking about now on Collinswood Terrace, we'll drop that building sign in lieu of having a freestanding sign there, which we think is very important for wayfinding purposes, et cetera. So we'd amend the application to remove the facade sign on that, what is it, the west elevation? And we would also remove the W at the top as well.
Thank you.
And we're still gonna take Mr. Klein's comments about the parking, although I don't know, might get a little jumbled with more words on that sign at that size, but we can circle back on that one. The other Klein, the other Mr. Klein.
And then the last question I had, I guess just a follow-up question. You said that the trees will eventually mature to cover the signage. The purpose of the sign would then be moot?
Not necessarily, I mean, during the winter too, without leaves, but.
Well, we're removing that sign anyway, so.
So that, okay, so that one's gone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions for this witness as to his testimony? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much.
I'm just gonna, I'm just going a little out of order here, Chairman, because Mr. Ratner had asked a question about medical suites and Mr. Natal had previously spoken to it, but I'm just gonna have him. I'm just gonna have him clarify that, just.
Thank you, Mr. Natal, you're still under oath.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think the question was approximately how many exam rooms are gonna be in the building? I took a look at our test fit, based on our test fit, it's about sixty exam rooms per floor, so about a hundred and twenty total is what we're calculating, and that's based on a test fit. A hundred and twenty exam rooms throughout the entire exam room. No, so the breakdown, I'll give you just, I mean, this is not set in stone, but just to give you a basic idea, cardiology may have twenty-five exam rooms, pulmonary may have fifteen exam rooms, endocrinology may have fourteen exam rooms, and the general area may have six. So each medical suite has a different number of exam rooms based on how large the suite is being designed. But total in the building, throughout the entire building, it'll be on or about a hundred and twenty.
So cardiology could have, what'd you say, fifteen?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Based on our test fit.
Do you know how many physicians would cover that?
This would accommodate, sorry, my plans are very small, so I just need to.
Yes.
Bear with me. Eyes are not what they used to be, I have to go to ophthalmology.
Who's our?
Will they have any ophthalmologists there?
Not at this location. This would have office, provider offices, five. So that would, we would have five provider offices.
Gotcha.
There, so that would accommodate essentially ten cardiologists, not all there at the same time, generally.
They're groups.
Say it again.
They're groups within, they're groups in a specialty.
There are specialties within the building. So there's, I think I testified there were seven or eight different specialties within the building, but all the exam rooms are generally the same.
Thank you.
Total throughout the building, approximately a hundred and twenty exam rooms.
I'm pretty sure you testified to this, I just don't remember. How many doctors do you estimate will be there at any one time?
We had fifty-five total estimated staff at any one time.
And how do you define staff?
Everyone within the building.
Okay, so every, okay.
Housekeeper.
Okay, doctors, other office staff, housekeeping?
Yes, that's correct, right, yeah, fifty-five total estimated.
At any one time?
At any one time, is what we're, what I might know, swear, yeah. Yes.
Excuse me, I raised the question, I think, before, let me just clarify it or ask it again. On any given day, all the doctors will not be in the building because Summit rotates them to other facilities.
That's correct.
So five of those suites could be empty or down to one doctor instead of three?
Yeah, they hopefully won't be empty, but they will not be at full capacity, correct, right? Because there's doctors that rotate and there's other doctors that are in surgery. If a doctor is in surgery two days a week, he may be in the office three days a week and be in another, you know, in our ambulatory surgery or at the hospitals doing surgery the other days. So they're not there five days a week, generally.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? And any questions from the public as to this witness as to his testimony? Seeing none, thank you very much, appreciate it.
This time, I'd like to recall Mike Lonzo Fama. We did, I believe, when we originally qualified Mr. Lonzo Fama, it was both as an engineer and a professional planner. And I would remind him he's still under oath.
I'm telling you, one second, I believe we did. No, I was just looking for something. Yes, we did.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I acknowledge I'm still under oath from the last time I was here testifying regarding this application. And I'm here this evening to provide you with the necessary testimony in support of the several variances that we seek as part of our application. The application itself, the building size, its location, its use is fully conforming with the ordinance. The variances that we're seeking are related to some physical issues with regard to the parking lot, as well as the number of parking stalls being proposed. Under your ordinance and dictated by the size of the building, the required number of parking spaces is two-hundred-and-seventy-six. However, since we're providing ten EV charging stations, that we get a bonus credit of one space reduction in the number of required spaces for every EV stall that we provide. So since we're providing ten, the required number of parking stalls drops down to two-hundred-and-sixty-six. And since we're proposing two-hundred-and-twenty-nine spaces as part of our modified design that we presented at the last hearing, we need a thirty-seven car parking variance. And I believe you heard testimony at the last meeting from Mr. Malz, who had done a parking study at the request of Mr. Lee Klein, your traffic consultant at the sister facility further down Northfield. And what they found was that the parking ratio that was actually observed at that other facility was right in line with the number of parking spaces we are proposing on our site. I believe the number came out to two-hundred-and-thirty if you applied the same ratio. I believe the ratio was four-point-three spaces per thousand square feet is what it calculated out to be. So in our mind, that this proposal will certainly support the building that's being presented to you this evening along with its use. And the other factor that you need to consider is at the other facility, they have urgent care, which is not at this facility. And that tends to generate more traffic at that facility. So keeping in mind that the number of parking spaces from a practical point of view works for this facility, works for the adjoining facility further down the road, a similar facility, in our mind, that this variance, this parking variance that we're seeking could be supported under the C two criteria of, under the municipal and use law, that this is a better planning alternative than strict compliance with the ordinance. By reducing the number of spaces that are necessary to support the safe operation of the facility, we're reducing the amount of impervious area on the site, providing more buffering for the adjoining property owner. So in our opinion, this would certainly meet the criteria of a variance grant that it does not have a negative impact on the zone plan or the zoning ordinance and is not inconsistent with the master plan as it appears in your current form. In addition to the deficiency in the required number of parking spaces. current form. In addition to the deficiency in the required number of parking spaces, we are also seeking a variance for the size of the parking stalls. Let me see if I can... Okay, stop. Doesn't work so well. Okay, there we go. Okay. And you can see that we have a number of parking stalls that are head-to-head, that are 18 feet in depth. Under your ordinance, under definitions, under your ordinance, a parking stall is defined as an area that's 18 feet wide by 20 feet deep unless you have the ability to overhang the vehicle, in which the parking stall can be 18 feet deep with the two-foot overhang. Of the 229 parking spaces that we're proposing, 141, or about 61% of them, are head-to-head 18 feet deep. But again, this is a size that is consistent with many applications. For example, the residential site improvement standards use 9x18 as a standard parking configuration. Many ordinances in other municipalities use 9x18 as a standard parking size. And this will fit and work fine with all of the vehicles that are currently on the road today. And again, I believe this could be granted under the C2 criteria, that the reduction in impervious coverage resulting from the elimination of two feet of pavement at each of these head-to-head spaces is certainly a benefit that could be supported by the application of the C2 criteria. Finally, the other variance that we are seeking is the fact that the parking stalls that are located adjacent to the residential properties are less than 25 feet away. This is Section 170-94A.5, which requires that any parking area be set back 25 feet from the adjoining residential property line. What I'd like to point out here is that if you look at the exhibit that's up on the screen, the existing parking area is much closer than what we're proposing. The existing parking area is about anywhere from 15 to 17 feet away. We're moving that back to between 18 and 20 feet. So we are pulling it further away. We're also providing some additional landscaping and fencing. And then as you move further to the south, the adjoining property that fronts on the back street, that parking area was only 15 and 1/2 feet, and we've eliminated all the parking that is head-in in that area. We've reconfigured that so that it is only a drive aisle that is 16 and 1/2 feet off. So we are improving the existing non-conforming condition by pulling the parking further away, reducing the number of parking spaces that are actually facing the adjoining property to the west.
Mr. Lonza Fama on that?
Yes, sir.
So you've got two different lots as to which you need a setback variance.
That's correct.
And it's a separate variance for each of those lots. So can you tell us what it would be... My notes indicated that for Lot 15, which is 99 Collins Terrace, it's 6.44 feet that you're asking it as a variance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is it for the other property?
At the other property, we're at 16 and 1/2 feet. So that's 9.5 feet, correct? Or 25 feet? Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, in this particular case, we are improving on an existing non-conforming condition. We're supplementing that separation between the residential properties and these parking areas by supplementing it with new landscaping, additional landscaping, fencing, grading modifications that help screen it even further. So again, under the C2 criteria, this is certainly a better planning alternative than leaving it where it was, basically. And the refuse area is compliant now. We've pulled that away, so it is 25 feet from the closest point on the adjoining properties. As to moving on to the signage, one of the questions that I believe Mr. Klein, Peter Klein, asked with regard to the sign on the south side of the building that faces the parking lot. If you measure from the canopy area, I don't know if you can see the cursor there, straight up perpendicular to the property line, to the property that fronts on Collins, that's 115 feet from that closest point of the sign to that property line. So exceeds the 100-foot setback requirement under the ordinance. But I've also been advised that those... The illumination of that sign will be timed out in the evening, so it would go out after a certain hour, so it would not be disruptive to the adjoining property owners. So that sign, its location, a sign is permitted on a corner lot as well as signage facing parking that is at the rear of the building. That is permitted under the ordinance. What's not permitted is the way we have that sign particularly sited on top of the canopy. Your ordinance talks about keeping the sign no more than 15 inches from the face of the building. In this particular case, it moves to the extreme end of the canopy. So we were never quite sure how that applied, but the size of the sign is compliant with regard to its overall dimension and the percentage of the rear facade. The overall dimensions of the sign are compliant. Its location relative to the residential property lines are compliant. However, the location atop the canopy, I believe there was some discussion at the first hearing as to whether or not that was a variance or not. I believe the way the ordinance is written, it does require some type of relief, and we wanted to be certain that we covered that and made sure that we sought the appropriate relief for that sign location.
Is the sign only on top of the canopy, or is it attached to the face of the canopy and then above it?
It's on top of the canopy. So it's not on the face. If it was on the face, it would be compliant, in my mind. But because it's on top of the canopy, technically, it's not.
I think you are correct, believe it or not.
Wow. And you only got one more meeting. So in any event, the location of the sign, the way it's configured, in my mind, that is also... Could be argued as a C2 variance. I think it's an aesthetically pleasing way to present the signage. I think it enhances the building facade. I think Mr. Blake has done a fantastic job on the building, and those signs are the icing on the cake, and I think they're important to have with regard to the facility.
Michael, can you give us the dimensions from the building with the variance?
From the building to the end of the canopy, 15 feet, is it? The canopy is... How far is the canopy from... Is about 15 feet from the face of the building, right? Not quite that much, about 12 feet? I'll have to... Give me a minute and I'll get it. Brian, give me the plans. Yeah, I got my schedule. It's about... It's between eight and nine feet from the face of the thing. Eight and nine feet from the face of the building. Excuse me? That's the... That would be the variance request. Well, we're allowed 15 inches. So whatever the difference is between eight feet and 15 inches. So that's 6 foot, 9 inches would be the extent of the variance being requested. Okay, the front facade sign is also permitted under the ordinance because we're a corner lot. It's a front... It's facing the front street, the street address of Northfield Road. And again, this is placed over the canopy, at the face of the canopy. Its size is compliant. However, its location atop the canopy also would require a variance. And that canopy is about five feet from the face of the building. So the extent of that variance would be 3 foot, 9 inches would be the extent of the variance there. Again, in my mind, it's an aesthetic element of the architecture, and under the C2 criteria, I think aesthetics is a good justification for the signage. We've eliminated the other sign that is actually permissible on the western facade opposite Collins. However, we are requesting a variance for a monument sign located at the intersection of Collins and Northfield. The proposed sign will be set back five feet from Northfield and 10 feet from Collins. The sign itself is 2 foot, 9 inches high by 6 feet long for a total of 16 and 1/2 square feet. And why we feel so strongly that this sign is imperative is because of the fact that we have no driveway on Northfield, that it's really critical to be able to have traffic moving along Northfield Road, to be able to identify where they should turn to get into the facility and make that movement onto Collins so that they can then enter the driveway off of Collins. And Mr. Lee Klein's comment regarding an arrow, as a matter of fact, at our office this evening before we came here, Brian and I were talking about perhaps the sign should have an arrow indicating that you have to make that left-turn movement down Collins to actually get into the facility. So we'd like to be able to add that arrow to the sign. We would still have the same Summit Health wording and logo. We would add an arrow to the top of that or at some location that would add to the... And be more of a directional finding sign for the traffic as they move along the roadway. And that... The argument and proofs for that variance are clearly traffic safety, to be able to identify the location of the facility and to be able to move safely into the site. Now, keep in mind, as you move further to the west, across Collins, there's quite a bit of vegetation on those residential properties, and they do obscure the building. But that sign at that lower elevation would actually be more visible than the sign up on top of the building. So in our mind, that sign is crucial to safe access into the site.
What is the lighting for that sign?
That's... That would be groundlit. That one's groundlit, yes.
So it's groundlit on the sign?
On the sign, correct, which is permissible where monument signs are permitted.
It's not backlit, something that's... Okay.
It's not. No, it'll be illuminated. So... And the number 39 in the upper corner, we've eliminated the W. I think the 39, that additional sign on that building is critical for emergency services to see and identify quickly 39, so they know where they need to access the facility. So I believe the variances that we are seeking are, in my mind, really relatively minor with regard to the number of parking spaces, the size of the stalls, the setbacks. I think how we've modified the plan and supplemented the landscaping, I really believe it was very important for us to meet with the neighbors, to understand their concerns, and to try and be as positive as we could in responding to their concerns and adding that additional landscaping and modifying that back parking area to eliminate those parking spaces that were head-in and facing towards that... Those residents. I did take a quick look at Mr. Diner's suggestion about tandem parking. I don't see how that would really gain us much, if anything. If you take a look at the way the parking is arranged, what we would have to do is we would have to eliminate parking, these perpendicular spaces, these rows of 14 would be reduced to 12 each. That would give us the 18 feet we need to make the tandem space here. So it really doesn't shift the extent of the parking area. It just shuffles the stalls around. It's... That's all it does. But we did take a close look at it, and from an operational point of view, it's really difficult at this type of facility because you have doctors coming in and out, nursing staff that have to come in and out, and if one gets caught behind the other, it could be a real problem trying to locate them in the building, get them out there. It works for residential because it's one family, one set of cars.
Okay. I appreciate your taking a look at that. One of the things that you mentioned as a comparison and one of the reasons that you feel the variance for the amount of parking that you're asking a variance for was that this facility does not have a urgent care, emergency care. Would the applicant agree to a condition that that would not be added to this building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael, it was mentioned that the signage would be lit during business hours?
Correct.
I may have missed it. What do you consider business hours?
I would defer to Brian on that one.
For the facility, or would each suite have their own option to stay open later if they chose?
So the building hours, the building hours that I testified to would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Sunday, no hours right now, but we wanted to leave that open, and it would be the same as Saturday if we did. So what we do, I believe, at the 75 East Northfield site, is the building there, I believe, closes at 9:00 and the signs go off at 10:00. So if the building here closed at 8:00, maybe the signs can go off at 9:00 here. We usually keep it an hour after closing. So it would be the building, not the specific department.
So everybody practicing in that building would abide by the same hours?
That's correct. They wouldn't be able to stay past 8:00 PM.
Has consideration been given to not lighting the sign facing the parking lot? Because obviously, if a patient is there, he knows it's Summit.
Consideration has not been given to that. We would like to light the sign, particularly at night, you know, this time of year where patients pull in. It's... You know, the sign is illuminated. I think it's a nice aesthetic color.
I'm saying in the back.
In the back, because it also shows them where the main entrance is. It gives them a visual when they get out of the car of where to head for that entrance. So we would like to keep it illuminated.
I have nothing further.
Mike, can you address, or do you want to defer to Brian, Mr. Diner's question just regarding those light fixtures with recessed houseside shields? I think he was just looking for clarification in that regard.
Yeah. They're LED fixtures, so it's not one single bulb, as you know. It's a whole series of diodes, and they can be recessed and controlled, and they can make sure that the light is directed downward. And I think they're recessed enough, I would defer to Brian for further explanation, but I think they're recessed enough that they're not going to be visible by the naked eye from the adjoining properties.
Okay. That was the area. It's not the down. That was pretty clear from the testimony that I read, that that's controlled and it's also pushed into the parking lot. It's the visible source from the neighbors that I have concern.
Mr. Conway, I remind you, you're still under oath.
Certainly. The parking lights in the center of the parking lot, those are not going to be... Those are not open for discussion because we can't provide any kind of shielding for them because the direction of the light is needed. The lights that are with the back facing the houses, such as the one right by the dumpster, the way that those fixtures are designed is the cutoffs in the back of the fixtures are severe. There's a... The bottom of the light is flat. The lights do not hang down below it. The lights are actually recessed up into it. The lights are actually recessed up into it, and they're individual diodes that are aimed. The house side shields are appropriate for like the metal halide or other HIDs because it's one powerful lamp with a series of reflectors, and that's basically an external device to block the glare coming from it. So in terms of would light be visible from the adjoining properties, if you look at some of the recessed lights where you're not underneath it, you'll see light coming down, but you won't necessarily see the glare if you were to look up into it. Those are, you know, and so that's how those, and the new style lights, you can't put the shields on them because they're so sophisticated in the distribution, the shields would affect the distribution.
Okay, thank you.
And the closest ones were dimming, I believe, 50% on the lights that are closest. So that, and we've already accounted that and dropped the mountain heights.
Mr. Lanzafama, there are a few things that came up previously which I think are still possibly awaiting answers, or I didn't understand the answers.
Okay.
There is, the southern drive aisle been reduced from 24 feet to 20 feet.
Correct.
And there's no parking on that stretch.
That's correct.
And there has to be a justification for our approving the 20-foot width. Is it considered to be a two-way driveway where there's a required minimum of 20 feet?
Or is... It is a two-way. It's a two-way driveway. Under your ordinance, it talks about a single driveway to be 12 feet and multiples of 10 for other driveways. There's only two ways you can go, so it'd be 20 feet.
So you aren't asking for a variance?
No, there's no variance required, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. There was a question as to whether or not there'd be some kind of restriction on the use of the EV charging stations. And I'm not sure whether there was ever an answer on that.
I believe the discussion that was had, I could be mistaken, I don't know if it was just internal to us or to the general public, was that that would be controlled by operations at the facility. In other words, a patient would get some kind of a code that they could enter in so that they could charge their car while they're at the facility, or one of the employees could charge their car while they're at the facility. It's not going to be open to the general public. I believe that was our testimony. If it wasn't our testimony, that is our testimony.
Okay. And were questions raised about whether or not there's some protection of the parking spaces on the adjacent property, the retail post office and so on?
Well, there's no protection. It's an open area. They have an easement right to access through our site to get to their spaces. These are the spaces that are located behind the post office in that area. So these spaces are unaffected by our design. What had come up was that some type of signage, whether it be markings on the pavement or placards that would be installed in the parking lot, that would state that these are parking spaces for those tenants. And we had agreed to a condition that we would work with engineering on some type of marking, whether it be pavement marking or signs.
I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
From members of the board?
Chairman, one thing I do want to clarify, and it relates to the signage illumination. We are proposing, and I think the biggest concern is the illumination of the signage facing the residential properties, which would be the rear signage, you know, on the parking lot side of the building. We would be requesting to allow for illumination of the monument sign as well as the front sign facing Northfield Avenue.
Thank you.
In other words, not shutting that signage off at the close of business.
Any questions from the board's professionals?
Yeah, so the automatic shut off within an hour of business would pertain to the rear, the rear-facing sign facing into the parking lot, facing towards the residential properties. We would like to keep the illumination for the monument sign, you know, as well as the front facade sign, which is a Summit Health sign over the front door, faces Northfield Avenue. We didn't think it was offensive to any of the neighbors.
Inasmuch as the concept of that is to be able to see the property with the arrow and get down it. If you're closed, I mean, granted, I understand, you know, identification and you want people to know you're there, but I'm assuming that if they're, your patients going in, they know you're there once they've been there. And if it's going to help eliminate a lot of light coming into neighbors' yards, I think that that's something that really needs to be considered.
Right. I think we were just viewing it as those signs not really coming into neighbors' yards? The Northfield-facing signs.
You told me about the signs on the street, on Northfield.
On the street, correct.
Which you'd like to have on all night?
Dusk to dawn.
There any other, Barry?
Just trying to clarify, you said dusk to dawn?
Dawn to dusk.
That's like night to morning. You want them on or... So basically, anytime it's dark out, you want them on. The ones on Northfield.
Correct, yeah. So the monument sign is relatively low lighting, and I guess one could argue if there were a nighttime emergency need, it's still providing wayfinding for emergency services.
And again, the monument's not internally illuminated.
That's the ground, that's the ground-mounted lighting, correct.
How bright is that lighting? Because I've noticed, you know, throughout town, one or two signs, they just are obnoxiously bright.
This would not be obnoxiously bright.
So condition would be not obnoxiously bright in whose eyes?
Could you define that, please?
Okay, yeah. My lighting consultant is telling me that they could be on a dimmer. We can control the light that way as well.
Yeah, that's probably better. Because I've just noticed, just on South Livingston Avenue, there's some are just, you know, as I said, obnoxiously bright.
And also some additional consideration for the time that that sign is actually on, I think should be given. The, you know, this is not a booming metropolis like New York where cars are there 24/7. You come down Northfield Road at 11 o'clock at night and there's not a lot of cars. So the benefit of acknowledging that you're there, perhaps by 11 o'clock, doesn't need to be on anymore and really would like some consideration there. Again, you're looking for a variance, little give and take might be very helpful.
I mean, yeah, I mean, one at 2:00 in the morning, that nobody's really driving by, what's the purpose of having the light on?
11 o'clock. Give and take, Mr. Diner.
Any other questions from the board or from our professionals? Any questions from members of the, oh, yes.
Yeah, Michael, just want to explore parking with you. So the operations testimony back in September was you're anticipating 55 staff members during the day and approximately 200 patients spread out over the course of the day. And you're providing 229 parking spaces. So even at peak hours, I think the argument's being made that you have sufficient parking, if not more than enough, for the patient load that you're anticipating. Question I have, and I defer to the board to kind of weigh in, is but does that create an opportunity for things like considering perhaps green banking the 16 spaces abutting the residential property and then putting them in only on an as-needed basis?
I believe that...
How would that, how do you think that would affect your, would that create not enough of a cushion or...
Well, that would be my only concern was that, was that, do we have enough to support the building overall? I know our analysis based upon the other site indicates that we're right at the numbers we should be at. And I don't know how exactly you would eliminate 16 spaces.
Michael, I'm thinking the ones, if you bring that plan down further, down, the other way, the other way, the other way, the other way.
Okay.
Keep going.
Oh, get rid, these are really...
Yes, the ones across from the EV.
Yeah, but Andrew, those are like prime spaces, they're right opposite the main entrance. If I were to bank...
They're also the ones creating the variance, that's why.
Well, they're really, we're actually pulling them away. They're existing now. But if I were going to bank anything, I would bank the ones towards Harrison, I think, is what I would bank, the ones furthest from the entrance. Yeah, the ones along the back section here, along the back section in here. You know, there's 33 here, maybe we eliminate, you know, 16 at the top or 16 at the bottom, the one most furthest removed from the main entrance, and bank those as, and put in grass. And if it turns out that, you know, it becomes a problem for us, we can always put them in. So that's something that we could consider. I'd have to consult with my client.
Yeah, and again, I'd defer to the board in terms of their feelings about whether the parking...
I think that what we don't want to happen is suddenly have all cars and, you know, parking on, you know, on the streets. I mean, we've seen that with, you know, some of the prior health facilities that have been there and, you know, there are all sorts of, you know, over the years, you know, all sorts of different ways of dealing with it, permit parking for those residents and no one else. And I think that's what we don't want to happen, so that can, you know, create some, you know, real burdens, even, you know, even if you do that and it becomes a parking problem, you know, how long then will it take you to then install those parking spaces?
Right, that's always the issue, is how do you lease it? What triggers it to be installed that becomes a problem?
And also, I think, my assumption is that Mr. Janu's 16 came from, that's the number of spaces that are immediately adjacent on the north side of the house.
Yeah, I was really focused on those.
I mean, if you took 16 out of 30 or 40 on Harrison, what are you really accomplishing? You still have...
Yeah, no, no, that's exactly right, Barry. I was looking to address that variance specifically.
Any other thoughts or comments from the board?
The entrance door is possible.
Exactly.
So that last row of spaces would obviously be the last filled up unless they're employees. That's a difference.
Right.
And will those be marked as employee spaces? Because those are the undersized spaces.
Yeah, they're the eight and a half. That's permitted by the code for employee spaces, hairpin striped.
One of the issues that was raised at the track was also snow removal. And inasmuch as parking numbers are incredibly critical here, what are you going to do with snow?
The snow can be pushed into the bioswale, and as it melts, it'll just get absorbed into the ground at the end of the parking lot. There's like no curb, it'll just sheet, the water sheet flows into the bioswale. Okay.
Any other questions from the board or our professionals? And Andrew, thank you for that, it was a good suggestion, thank you. Members of the public, have any questions for this witness as to his testimony? Yes? Name and address again for the record, please.
Andrew Cubios.
Thank you.
C-U-B-I-L-L-O-S at 22 West Harrison Place. And I'll just put my glasses on. Just like Mr. Natal, my vision's not what it used to be, except it went out a lot earlier.
You're too young.
Shout down my fighter pilot ambitions. So could you scroll up to where the dumpster is? So I know back at, our meeting at the community center back on September 30th, you said that the reason why the dumpster was moved to where you have it in the plan was because of the ordinance that Livingston has, that they require like islands, like a certain number of islands in the parking lot, and because of the placement of those islands would make it difficult for the garbage truck to maneuver around it?
Yeah, we originally, as you recall, we originally had it on the east side of the building, but we realized that it would be more difficult for the truck to get into and maneuver, to pick up the waste in that location, and would end up blocking some travel dials. By putting it where we have put it, the truck can enter off of Collins, come straight in, do whatever it needs to do to pick it up, and easily exits back out again. So it's really an ideal location, minimizes the movements of the truck.
So if, and this is just, this isn't really much of a question, more of a suggestion for both you and the planning board to consider, is there, is there a way that, you know, a variance can be worked out to reduce the number of islands so that way the dumpster could be moved back to where it is currently, so that way it'd be easier for the garbage truck to maneuver? Because I know it's a, it's a measure by the town to try to make the town more green by, if it's a parking lot that's, you know, kind of hidden behind buildings, I don't think, you know, most people would care or not if there's, you know, islands or not in this parking lot.
Well, part of the issue too was the parking on the adjoining property. If you notice where I indicated in that area here, we also can obstruct their access. And we realized that by placing the dumpster in this location where we originally had it, it restricted access into their parking area as well. So we really felt that the location where we have it really makes the most sense from an accessibility point of view. There's still adequate room to buffer, and I think Mr. Conway's done a great job in supplementing the landscaping in that area. It's in a concrete enclosure, same material as the building. So it's in an appropriate location, it's appropriately set back from the property lines, it's well screened. So I believe it's a win-win for everybody at its current location.
And just to clarify, the building in the plan is still like within the same footprint as the, as the gem currently is? So like, so where the building ends on, what was that, the east side?
Correct, the building footprint is almost identical to the original building.
Because when, in the parking lot, because where the dumpster currently is, I mean, because I'm constantly in and out for the post office, I mean, I've never had an issue, you know, with the dumpster being in the way, because I always turn around that corner. So I just wanted to see if it was, you know, possible to, you know, remove the islands and then move the dumpster back to next to the building.
No, I'm inclined not to go that route. I think where we have it is appropriate.
And then another question going for pertaining to the lighting, not the lighting, the sign that's facing the parking lot?
Correct.
Because as Chairman Fernandez said, I too am dealt with obnoxious signage. In fact, the sign from the New York Sports Club points directly into my bedroom, so I had to get blackout shades, and even then still managed to get through. So, and even though it's closed, I mean, the sign is still, you know, blasting, you know, full throttle. Is there a way to, I know we were just discussing about, you know, keeping the sign on, what was the, for the sign that's, so for the sign that's facing like the parking lot, what was the, how long was it going to be kept on?
That would be shut off at 9:00 p.m.
Yeah.
And then what's the final business hour, or what time does business hour end at?
8:00.
8:00?
8:00 p.m.
Yeah, because at least with the current trees that are there, it completely blocks out the building. But I mean, those are, you know, tall, like 40 to 60-foot mature trees. But, and then the winter time, I mean, it comes through. But then the problem then is that, because those trees are in the plant, are planned to be cut down, so that means when they plant, you know, the new trees that they're going to plant there, as, you know, Mr. Conway stated from the last hearing, is that it would take... as, you know, Mr. Conway stated from the last hearing, is that it would take, you know, about 25 years for the trees to reach full height. So that means in summertime, that sign is still going to be, instead of, you know, it's, it did being a problem in the wintertime, now it's going to be a whole like year round. And there's a lot of bedrooms on, in our house that like face, directly face the parking lot. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's not going to be an issue.
Well, keep, keep in mind too, that that sign from your house is probably 250 feet away, almost 300 feet away.
I mean, I understand that, but even then, like, I had to get blackout shades in my room. Because even at night, like, with the shades, when I have the shades up, I don't even need the lights in my room. I could still see where I'm, clearly where I'm going. So even at that distance, like the lights are still, I had to get blackout shades for that reason. So I just wanted to make sure that it's, you know, I'll be able to sleep at night.
Can, if you can talk about the sign and the lighting a little bit, just so we get a better understanding of how much lighting, you know, that sign is throwing off?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
If you can maybe describe that sign and the lighting and how much you think it's going to be throwing off? And maybe a little bit more specific on how the sign will be lit?
Well, it's internally illuminated, um, it's like a halo kind of light. It's not a direct source of light that you're going to see, um, like some glaring opaque panel, that's not what it's going to be. And like I said, it's, it's probably 300 feet away from his house. So I, I don't see it as being a, a huge problem. And keep in mind that there's, there is some grade differential there. So, um, I don't believe, um, I believe the old sign on the gym.
That's what I was going to ask, where was, where was the old sign located compared to this one?
On the horizon than where this sign is going to be on the facade. Because this is right over the canopy, which is probably only 15 feet to the, to the top. Right. Oh, it's underneath the height. So it's, so it's even lower than the existing signage that was on the building. So this will be much lower. And the landscaping that Mr. Conway talked about, we'll probably screen that out in a much, much, much shorter period of time than you've indicated, it's 25 years.
And, um, do you have like an example, like of like any signs in the area that I could look at that have like a similar? Do you know like any like signs in the area that I could like see as like an example, like as to like, like the brightness or the type of like illumination?
I, I couldn't give you.
Like there's the, uh, the Summit Building that's like, you know, like a couple of blocks down from this one, does it have like the same or similar type of lighting?
Is that the same, is that the same?
Mike, what color are the, the letters? Is it a red, is it a red color? I mean, it's not white. Do you know?
I'm deferring to Mr. Blake.
I'm just saying, it's.
Can you bring up the architectural drawings? Because Lee Klein, you know, just made a very good point. And if you can just bring up the.
Right, the east, the east view, because that's where the sign is.
Correct.
There, yeah, there are, there are.
Let's put it, just, let's get it on, on the board, let's blow it up and if you can explain it, Lance, and just grab the microphone so everybody can hear you.
That's the east side, the bottom is the east side, so that one.
Top, top elevation.
This is good, this is good, right.
See how the sign is set back kind of underneath the other canopy?
So, so there, there are two canopies really, okay? One is to create cover for vehicles and for emergency vehicles, okay? It's 14 feet to the underside. The canopy that holds the signage slips underneath that canopy above the door. So it's like, uh, you know, maybe that canopy is maybe 10 feet and then the signage is above it. So, um, there'll be, you know, it, it's not going to be nearly, I believe, as, as high as that New York Sports Club sign is now, that, that sits on the fascia, you know, on the facade of the back of the building. It'll be internally illuminated, yes. Each letter will have light. The logo is red.
Have you, uh, seen the current New York Sports sign that's apparently still lit up? Have you seen it lit up? I'm just curious. Whether you've seen it to see whether it's brighter than what you're proposing, okay?
Yeah, I haven't been back there.
It's still lit up, yeah. It, it's, it's lit up all night. And then just, just a quick note too, just a quick note, so the, um, the parking lot is like about, about like four and a half to like around four and a half feet like higher than our property. So even if the sign is lower, it's still kind of like, so like, uh, my bedroom window is kind of like level with like the middle, like the, kind of like the middle top end of the sports club. So even, so that's what I'm also concerned about, because even if it's like the sign is lower, like from my end, it's still like, because of like that height difference, like in elevation, it's still kind of like pointing directly into my bedroom window. Could that also be made dimmable?
Well, that one's getting shut off at what time, 9?
It's coming, it's shutting off at 9.
It's also not white, it's, it's blue.
Is the same sign that you're proposing here in existence at your current location at 75?
These are all my questions for now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you, you go, I just have a quick question for you. That your concern about the garbage dumpster is because of its physical location or because of noise of pickup? Or what, what specifically is your concern?
Well, specifically the physical like location. I mean, it's always been loud because, I mean, that truck comes like four in the morning, it just sounds like a bomb goes off every time like the dumpster pickup happens. But I know my mom is not here, she couldn't make it because she's had a work emergency the whole week. But, um, for her, like the biggest thing is like the location. Also with the fact that, uh, you know, with trees being cut down and then obviously new trees being planted, it's something that she's going to have to, you know, she's 66 right now, is about to retire. And she just finished paying the mortgage this past May. She intended on just, you know, retiring in this house, but now it's like, she doesn't want to have to, you know, have to pick up and move. Or, I know, she doesn't want to deal with like seeing the dumpster there. Because even from the first floor, our kitchen window, we could still see like everything there. So she doesn't want the dumpster.
The dumpster is going to be hidden, okay, behind a, a block wall that one of our requirements is that it's the same material as the building. So when you're, one, there's also going to be a fence back there that's probably going to be equal in height or higher than, um, the, the top of that dumpster wall. And then even if you did see that, it's going to be, I mean, hopefully an attractive wall. If we think the building is going to be attractive, then that, that dumpster enclosure will also be. If your concern is about getting picked up at four in the morning, that's something that we could ask the applicant to make sure that the time that it's picked up is a more reasonable time so it doesn't disturb the neighbors. And that's a, a fair request.
Yeah, and I think we, I think we actually touched on that the first night of hearing from an operational perspective. That is obnoxious when you, I know, when you've got commercial near residential and you're hearing the banging and so forth. So, you know, we're probably, Summit Health is going to be private waste hauler. So, you know, we can control that time, I don't know what the appropriate time, earliest time would be, about 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM? And just during, uh, you know, normal times over the course of the day. I know a lot of these garbage companies like to come in and set their own times and try to get in and out as early as possible and do their thing, but.
Agreed, but as long as you're paying the tab, you'll get them to come when you want.
We can agree to that as a condition of approval, uh, that's totally understandable.
Yeah, that was part of the initial testimony was you were going to time the, um, the trash hauler so it wasn't going to inconvenience the neighbors.
And we do have a time, I just don't know what.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I didn't know whether you had an ordinance.
The town has a time, so whatever it is, we'll.
I'm sorry, and actually now I have one question because now you just sparked another question. So again, the plan, uh, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I remember from the last hearing, Mr. Conway said that the, so the height of the trees that were being planted, I, you said that there would be two different kinds of trees. There was the evergreen trees and then you're planting the shade trees. And how tall were the shade trees going to be? So they'd be planted at 14 to 16 feet, and then the evergreens, you said were like seven to eight feet? So the shade trees would be taller than the dumpster? And then the evergreen trees, do you think those would really just be covering like the height of the dumpster? And then, um, and then I'm just assuming like all the, like the green circles, all large green circles, those are also trees as well?
That's correct. So you could see how those trees would diffuse your view of the sign as well. So those canopies would, would diffuse that, some of that view.
And those are, so the big, the big green circles, those are the shade trees?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, um, all right, yeah, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the public for this witness as to his testimony? Seeing none, thank you.
We have no further witnesses, Chairman.
Thank you. Now is an opportunity for the public to make any sworn statements under oath, either in support of or in opposition to the application. So are there any members of the public that would like to make a sworn statement for or against the application? This would be your opportunity. Seeing none, but yes, sir, yes? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's John J. at 56 Collinwood Avenue.
I'm sorry, that was.
John, J O H N, J, J A Y, at 56 Collinwood Avenue.
If you can swear in the witness when you got a chance?
You're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, first like to thank the members of the board and the Summit Health team for taking considerations of the neighborhood. It's been very progressive and we've made some good steps here. There's been a lot of scientific research that we've done as well, also engineering studies proving landscaping, the traffic. But the parking is the one thing that we're looking here for a variance. And the one study that was done was one person going on one day as a small sample set to see what that parking looked like. So in my opinion, did not constitute scientific research as some of these other studies have done. So I just wanted to say that the variance being requested did not kind of meet the, some of those hurdles that we have seen for some of the other studies that were done for many other things presented here today or over the course of history here. And, sorry, for consideration too, I do, if the board does so grant these variances, would like to keep consideration the traffic going down Collinwood Avenue. Right, I think we discussed on having signs on Hobart Gap Road onto Collinwood, making that a private way or, you know, no left turn, whatever it is to make sure that that road stays as private it can be if we do decide to grant this variance. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You put everything in, I definitely, again?
We have your name again for the record?
Name and address again for the record.
Andrew Cubios, C U B I L L O S, 22 West Harrison Place.
You swear to testimony you're about to give in this manner will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So because of New Jersey law ordinance, medical offices are required to have one parking space for every 200 square feet of medical office space. This is why Summit Health is required to have 266 spaces after the 10 EV spaces for their 55,200 square foot facility. The parking lot currently has, and this is the parking lot pertaining to, you know, the portion, this is excluding, you know, not what is with the post office and that side. The parking lot currently has 173 spaces. And even with expanding the parking lot to close to the curb of West Harrison Place, they still come up 36 spaces short and are seeking a variance for 236, 230 spaces instead, sorry. The result, this will result in the loss of over 50, 40 foot plus tall mature trees which serve as a nature barrier protecting the neighborhood from the parking lot, buildings and North Hill Road with the green, with the open green space being replaced with a parking lot. In addition, the neighborhood will also be losing two walkways or paths which function as major shortcuts or throughways for the post office, the bus stop into the city, the pizzeria, wine depot, et cetera. What is a 60-second walk to Calabria will now become a six to seven minute walk, turning a two-minute round trip into a 12 to 14-minute trip just to pick up pizza. And I know that personally because during the pandemic, I would walk around that entire block and it would consistently take me 13 minutes, so I just, you know, divide that by two. This will severely decrease the walkability of the neighborhood. And since the town is keen on further developing its downtown area, decreasing walkability directly contradicts that goal, especially since our neighborhood lacks sidewalks. Another concern after, and I mean, this is something that I already went over with Mr. Lanza Fama, but since I typed it here, I'll just say it anyway. Another concern after meeting with Mr. Lanza Fama back in September on the advice of Mayor Viera, he said the reason why the dumpster is being placed right next to our backyards is because of a Livingston ordinance that requires parking lots to have islands for every, for a certain amount of square footage of parking lot. And that the islands would prevent the garbage truck from being able to maneuver to the dumpster in its current location next to the building. To be clear, we're not saying that Summit Health can't build here, but the side effects of this project in its current form will lead to a direct decrease in the quality of life for the residents of this neighborhood. It seems that Summit's plans are too big for the property that they want to build on. In the first hearing back on September 5th, Mr. Natal stated that there will be 55 employees and an estimated patient volume of 200 per day, but spread throughout the day and not all employees will be there every day. So it seems that the current 173 parking spaces would accommodate that volume. Is there a way for Summit Health and the planning board to work out a variance for 93 less spaces and less islands? Or even no islands? In that way, the parking lot will not have to be expanded, preserving the open green space and trees that shield the neighborhood and the dumpster will not have to be placed next to our backyards. Because at the end of the day, we're the ones that have to live with the consequences of the project. And, um, just for, I also brought pictures because sometimes like, you know, when we're looking at plans or, you know, through words, it's sometimes hard to, you know, be able to visualize it. So I brought, I don't know if I would be able to bring those up there.
How many do you have? They're all different?
Yeah, just for the record, you took the pictures?
Yes.
When did you take them?
So the ones with all.
Roughly, I don't need the exact date.
Yeah, September and then the ones with the walkway.
Mark malls one exhibit?
Yeah, we should mark.
Objector one.
Pass them on forward to you so you can see them.
So as you can see in the photos, like the, you know, there's really tall mature trees that provide not just block in the building, but it just provides basically an entire barrier. And so, I mean, I've been living next to the New York Sports Club since like, basically at, when I was an embryo, so. It's like, um, so it's, I've never had, so I've, you know, I'm used to a parking lot. It's like because the trees are there, it's never been a problem. But now with the loss of, you know, having to cut down all those trees, it becomes problematic. Because now it's like, we're living in a parking lot now. And I know that there are going to be new trees planted. And I know that there are going to be new trees planted, but the problem is, is that it will take decades for those trees to get up to that level. And, I mean, my mom, you know, as I said, my mom plans to retire within a year, she's 66 right now, so if we're saying, if we're talking, you know, 25 years, that means she'll be 87 by the time, you know, those trees reach that height, and it's something that she's really, you know, pretty stressed out about. And I think that, yeah, that concludes my testimony, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Name and address, please?
Sure, Allison Greenspan, 44 Collinwood Avenue.
Can you spell your last name?
Green, like the color, S P A N.
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for your time. I would like to say that I'm not fully opposed to the building going there, and that something should go in that space, it has been empty for some time, but I do think that there should be a way to fit what you want to build there into what we currently have existing there. It feels like a detriment to the neighborhood that you're taking away all those green spaces, it's a concrete jungle, it's going to change the feel and the look, excuse me, of the neighborhood. And I just think that there's already a parking lot, there's already a building there, I'm just concerned that, you know, these variances that we give out in this town are supposed to protect the neighborhoods, and it feels like this is going beyond that scope. So I don't feel that the building size is in the best interest of the neighborhood, and it's going to change the look and feel of the neighborhood, and place a hardship on all of the people that live there, so I would like to just go on record as saying that I am opposed to that variance. Thank you.
Hello.
Name and address, please?
Melissa Cianzi, 51 Collinwood Avenue.
Counsel, are you going to testify or offer closing argument?
I'm going to make a small closing on behalf of the clients that I'm representing in the neighborhood.
Well, you're not testifying at this, don't you tell me?
No, I guess, in a way, I am as a resident, but I am acting on their behalf as well.
All right, we'll swear you in then.
Sure.
You swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
We feel we must be reminded of the goals of the master plan of Livingston, and they are to, one, preserve and enhance the primarily residential character of the community, two, to maintain a balance of residential, business, and public uses, and three, to preserve and improve the quality of life. And with those goals in mind, we voice several concerns. The C2 variances, as requested by the applicant, must be for the benefit of the community and not merely for the private purposes of the owner. A requested variance is asking for increased parking spaces, and this increase in parking lot space will require the removal of 64, 50-plus-year-old, fully grown and matured trees on the property. This large green space on West Harrison Place has always been a part of the neighborhood and creates a necessary balance between the busy commercial areas on the next blocks. Removing this area and extending the large parking lot turns this neighborhood into an increasing urban landscape. A variance that allows for the missing 37 parking spaces will not be a benefit to the community, as we can only see any potential overflow extending onto the residential streets next to the property. Any overflow may also make the neighboring businesses in the same parking lot uncompliant with their required parking spaces for their businesses. The applicant is seeking a variance to the setback to a residential property line of less than 25 feet. Similarly, earlier this spring, a resident of West Harrison Place requested a variance of only four and a half feet of the frontward setback of the 40 feet, and was denied. As this board has previously established, the setback variances aren't in the best interests of the public good or the residents of this neighborhood. While there is a prior non-conforming use, if the entire lot is to be demolished and redone, there should be no issue to now fully comply with the current regulations and submit a plan that complies with it. Allowance of this variance would detriment the current residents instead of complying with the zoning ordinances. The need for the variance relief allegedly results from the property's unique configuration, and the shape of the property allegedly imposes a hardship on the applicants and the proposed construction, but to the previous tenants, there was nothing so uniquely hard on them to request any variances. The New Jersey Supreme Court reminds us that an applicant must evaluate the specific issues of the particular property's suitability for proposed use, and here we have the applicant requesting variances that will adversely impact the overall neighborhood. One can clearly see that the property is not suitable to the applicant's proposed construction. And with this in mind, we ask you to deny the proposed variances at 39 West Northfield Road and keep the primarily residential face of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public? Seeing none, any closing statements?
Didn't have the green button pushed. Turned it off, so. Yep, I'm waiting.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So first off, I do want to take a moment just to thank the board and all its professionals, Jackie and everyone, it takes a lot to, to get to this point of a hearing, a lot of application processing, review, and the like. I also want to thank our neighbors who provided a lot of thoughtful, you know, comments and questions and concerns. As everyone is aware, this is a property that's located in the township's B Central Business Zoning District, it all allows for a lot of variety of commercial uses, retail, office use, and medical office use. This is a property that has functioned commercially for decades, believe it was originally a supermarket, a couple grocery stores before it ultimately turned over and was redeveloped for, as a health club facility, originally Jack Elaine, subsequently New York Sports Club. This property has basically been vacant and unutilized since August of 2020. Our client did spend a considerable amount of time finding a tenant that would be suitable with a use that's permitted in the zone, so we weren't coming in, you know, well, before a zoning board seeking devariance relief for something that's not otherwise permitted. Medical office use is permitted, we've got a tenant here, Summit Health, they are a top provider of medical services in the region, they already have a significant presence here in Livingston and the surrounding communities, and I think they've been proven to be a good neighbor in all their other locations. You heard detailed testimony throughout these hearings from Brian Natal as to the need for this facility, the nature of the business operations, and the benefits to the community that'll be offered through the additional specialists who would occupy this facility. You heard testimony from our engineer, our landscape architect, as to the design of the project, which largely complies with the bulk standards that are applicable in the B-zone, satisfied building height, floor area, building setbacks, lot coverage, impervious coverage, and the like. Significant testimony was offered with respect to the stormwater management system, which of course is, was important and a concern articulated, as well as the landscape and lighting. You heard from our traffic engineer, Harold Malts, he spent a lot of time going through his traffic analysis, he is fully aware of this road system, personally did counts, personally analyzed the other businesses in this location, and his conclusions were that this project would not have a deleterious impact on traffic in the area. The design of the parking lot, the circulation, and the number of parking spaces would be sufficient for the needs of this medical facility. We think the building itself is very well-designed, based on the architectural plans prepared by Rotwine and Blake, and we do think it'll be an overall aesthetic improvement. We believe that the signage proposed, which has now been amended and reduced in terms of number of signs, is appropriate, it's tasteful, and it's properly located and sized. We believe that the planning testimony of our project planner, Mike Lanza Fama, does justify the grant of the requested bulk variance relief as to parking spaces, signage, the parking setback, which is an existing condition, as well as the other relief sought. I would remind the board, this is not a devariance case, this is not a particular suitability case, in terms of the variance relief that we are seeking here, we're seeking C, C variance relief, and Mr. Lanza Fama, you've justified everything under the C2 criteria, not the hardship criteria. We have endeavored throughout the course of these hearings to be thoughtful and considerate as it relates to the comments and concerns of our neighbors, and we do understand change is hard when you've got, when you've got development on a commercial property that's adjacent to residential properties. We did come in with what we originally believed was a well-designed landscape plan, including the fencing, et cetera, and we believe that based on the comments of our neighbors, as well as the board and the board professionals, we did significantly improve on that by increasing the buffers, increasing those parking setbacks, relocating the dumpster, making modifications, as I indicated in my opening statement, flipping landscaping and fencing to the benefit of our neighbors on Harrison. We think it's a great plan, and with that, we are respectfully requesting that the board grant approval of the application as submitted and amended over the course of the hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, and before, and before we close the evidentiary record, any comments from any of the board members as to any items that they consider, still consider open, that still need to be addressed?
Just one briefly, with regard to landscaping along the Harrison side where we're taking down a lot of the trees, and I know that height becomes an issue, but one of the things, and I apologize because maybe you have it there, is burning any of those landscaped areas up to get the trees higher to start with, is that something that can be considered to help at all in that area?
Brian, if you're going to speak, you should get up on a microphone.
The way we end up, ended up with the bio base and the bio swell, and the fence and the property, the parking lot being higher than the street, we were as judicious as we could, but we, we are maxed out at kind of every slope we have there.
Got you.
So we can't really raise it up at all.
All right, thank you.
The parties having had an opportunity to make closing statements, it appears to the chair that the applicant, all interested persons, and the board members have had reasonable opportunity to be heard, and that the evidentiary record of this hearing ought to be closed. Absent objection, and in the absence of any motion for a continuance, the evidentiary record is closed, and no further testimony or evidence shall be heard or received, and the board members shall now have an opportunity to state and discuss their views on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I think that in view of the complexity of the matter, that anything that we do tonight be done as non-binding guidance to our attorney to prepare a resolution for consideration at a subsequent meeting.
I think that's, agreed, I think it's a good point.
And agreements made verbally, I'd like to see those put into the application, how do we do that? What's the, like, the timing?
Well, they would, they would be conditions of approval. I mean, we have, just going through, we have the following variances. Bear with me. A variance for 37 parking spaces, a variance for stall size, a variance for parking setback. Yeah, just parking setback, canopy, the rear canopy sign variance, because only 15 inches allowed, it's eight feet away. Similarly, with the front sign, there's a variance because of its location and its location from the facade, the monument sign variance. Am I missing anything? I think I have, I think.
Well, those are big conditions, I think there's still a variance for the number of signs, was going to be five, but now it's four, but I think the code permits three, so technically it's.
Okay, so that would be, that would be variance number seven.
We don't actually have a variance for number of signs, the number of signs there are, they are permitted, the wall signs really are just the project, you know, they're not facade-facing, they're, they're on the canopy. Size-wise, and number of signs actually is acceptable, with the exception of us proposing the freestanding monument sign.
Okay, so I have, I have six, as long as I have not missed anything.
Right?
If you have, it would be on the transcript, and we would include it in the resolution.
Do we have to do anything about the distance from the residential that's not, should have been 25 feet? It's going to be 20, we don't have to do that?
You're talking about the, yeah, the setback of the parking on the street side?
Yeah, on the back.
Well, the one variance for parking setback from residentially zoned properties?
Right.
Yeah, I think he read.
Did he read?
I think that the chairman mentioned the two properties that we have a parking setback requirement for.
Thank you.
There were a number of conditions which are in the transcript, you know, no urgent care, you know, when the signs are going to go off and dimmed.
Yeah, and just with, with that, Chairman, if I may, the rear, the rear signs would go off at 9:00 PM, the front signs would go off at 11:00.
Right.
Actually, there are a lot of conditions that were talked about during the course of the hearing. For instance, pedestrian crosswalk signs in the rear parking lot, that I think if this is approved, that one of the conditions that would, that there would be an updated vehicle crossing access agreement, covering the flow of traffic through the parking lot, and the change in the direction of the driveway that is on Northfield. The, those probably ought to be submitted to the township engineer and the zoning officer before any permits are issued. There was testimony that, and it should be a condition, that all the trees that are going to be planted to have either actively functioning tree-gated type water bags for the first three years to be maintained by the applicant, unless a sprinkler system is put in. That the streetscape would be coordinated with the bid. That one of the concerns of the neighbors would be met by having no littering signs in the parking area. There should be agreement and approval achieved with the township engineer on the routes for demolition and construction equipment and vehicles. Video camera inspection of the sewer lines. What I would like to see is, since there have been a lot of concerns about traffic and parking, that there be a traffic review. and parking, that there be a traffic review, and I think this is the same condition we had on the other building, a traffic review no later than 18 months after a CO is issued, with the board retaining jurisdiction if any changes in the approval are recommended by the township engineer on the basis of that inspection. There would be a limit agreed to on the trash pickup time. That condition on signage, lighting going off that was discussed, and a condition on reduction of the intensity of lighting of the parking area after business hours. No future urgent care. And the signage to control the use of the parking spaces on the adjacent commercial property would be worked out with our township engineer. And anything else that's on the record.
That's why we've had a court reporter here.
Exactly.
Throughout.
Anything else from the board members? You know, thoughts on the non-binding guidance to be given to our attorney, you know, in favor, in opposition?
Everybody should understand what I've outlined is what the board has to consider in determining whether or not it's voting yes or no.
I can jump in first. At first, I'd like to, one, thank the public for their participating, bringing concerns to light, and then recognize the applicant for being open to those comments, making a number of significant changes. I think when, you know, some of the concerns were raised and for the public, it's sometimes not as easy to understand. This is, as has been indicated, it's permitted use. The parking variance, if the parking variance were not granted, the result would be to clear even more green space, to create more parking spaces, so that actually, you know, by limiting, granting the variance, we actually limit the number of parking spaces to a low number than would otherwise be required. As it relates to that variance, I think that the testimony, particularly as to the basement space, which I think was 6,800 square feet, so that alone would be 30-some-odd spaces, and I think the testimony was fairly clear that that's not really going to be actively used and it's sort of supplementary. I'm certainly comfortable there. Overall, I think there was good progress made on the signs, the lighting being observant. I think the landscaping will ultimately be an improvement as it matures. I think that the applicant has met its burden of both the positive and negative criteria under the C2 variance. Again, we're always cognizant of the impact on neighboring and residential properties wherever we have these, and I always try and think, well, you know, what was there? And what was there was a gym that I'm sure opened at probably 5:00 in the morning and closed at 11:00 at night, and in my sense would probably be much more impactful adversely on the residential neighborhood. This is, you know, I think a use with, you know, limited and defined hours. It's a medical office, it's not particularly noisy, it's not a restaurant, it's not a bar, all of which would be allowed in the B1 zone. So of the permitted uses in the B1 zone, this is probably one of the least intensive and impactful, and so overall, I think the burden's been met.
I would pretty much echo what Barry had said, that understanding the uses that could go in here, this is one of the least impactful, I believe, certainly better than the gyms that we have seen there before. When Jack La Land was there, parking was a nightmare. And pleased to see that we're not going backward into that type of use, which again could be allowed at substantially less square footage overall. So that although the square footage here is larger, the, hopefully the use, as indicated by the testimony that we've heard, will be more controlled, the hours substantially more controlled. Appreciate the input from the residents and the adjustments made by the applicant to those concerns. And certainly can't go through all of the conditions, but the purpose of what we're doing tonight is to have the opportunity, before a final vote is done, to review all of those, make sure that all of those conditions that we've talked about and have been agreed to are going to be in if this is ultimately approved. We'll have that opportunity to do that, to go back and either read a transcript or watch the actual testimony tonight. But overall, I think it's a much more attractive building, a much better use than it's been in the past. They've shown that, you know, the tenant, the applicant, to be a good neighbor within the community and that, I think, in the end, there's no application that's perfect. And hopefully, if issues arise in the future, being a good neighbor, they will try to adjust those the best they can. But I think we've tried to take into account the neighborhood, the impact on the neighborhood, the possibilities of what could go there, and that this is a reasonable use of the land and not requiring a zone change for use. So I agree that the resolution should be in that regard.
We're all concerned about trees, and we have been every time we can, every time we have to face the issue of trees being removed. Two or three centuries ago, when I first started on this board, the law permitted us to say whether or not they can cut down a tree, and then to say what they would place in the ground after they cut down the tree. The State Department, or the state in general, I should say, decided that we should not have any authority over cutting down trees. We have no say about that whatsoever. All we can do is try to do the best in convincing a developer to plant trees in replacement. I think they've done a pretty good job in that regard. I just wish we didn't have to deal with that issue in its entirety, but we're stuck with it. We also do not have jurisdiction to deal with traffic on adjacent streets, traffic that may be cutting through the neighborhood. Unfortunately, this board has no authority in that area whatsoever. Again, something I wish we could deal with, but we can't. With all of these factors taken into consideration and the flexibility that's been shown on all sides, I would recommend that the ordinance approving this as a permitted use should lead us, on the testimony that we received, to our attorney drafting a resolution of approval with the conditions that we've all spoken of.
And I'm also supportive of the application along the way, and I certainly appreciate the residents that came out, appreciate the applicant working together and trying to come, you know, some accommodation that was reasonable for everybody. This is a permitted use, you know, in this area, and, you know, there are, you know, other permitted uses, I think, that would be, or could be, you know, more detrimental to the neighborhood. You know, the sign package, and people know I'm not a huge fan of monument signs, but, you know, I think in this situation, it does work, and there have been other changes to the other signage, signage that's on the buildings to reflect that there is a monument sign here and also reflective of, you know, impact on neighbors as well. So, you know, with, you know, the various conditions, which are, number one, have been put on the record, number two, will be put into the resolution, I'm also supportive of the application as well. So with that, so we've been given non-binding guidance to our attorney to prepare a resolution for consideration at the board's meeting on...
Mr. Chairman, that would be a special meeting on Tuesday, January 16th.
January 2nd, 16th? So the hearing to continue with that date with no further notice by the applicant required.
Mr. Valerio will have a transcript prepared to aid you.
Yeah, that would be great. Can you get that over to us?
I'll special order it for the holiday season. Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, so if you can get that to us, this way we can prepare a resolution for the board to consider.
Yeah.
Thank you all so much.
Usually, I think a typical turnaround, two, once a usual, two weeks are a typical turnaround, so, just in time for the holiday.
And Mr. Diner? Thank you. We are done.
Thanks, everybody, and good holidays to all.